Okay, I will call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Just an announcement, our YouTube link is not functional. So there is the, the link to this meeting, hopefully since you're hearing this, you, you found it already. But if you are a member of the public and attending the meeting this way, unless you're speaking in the public comment part of the meeting, if you would keep your screens blackened so that we can take count for votes and stuff, without trying to figure out who's a board member and who's not from, from the picture. But I will ask for an approval of agenda. Don't move Adrian. Okay. Thank you. It was Maria and Liz. And were there any changes of, or, or any other comments on the agenda? Okay, none. Then I will call the question. All in favor, please say aye. Or raise your hand. I guess more to the point. Okay, any nays? Nope, thank you. No abstentions, I'm assuming. Thank you. From May 5th. I could have a motion, please. Thank you. Asha, did you raise your hand? Yes, okay. Um, I wasn't sure who, who motioned to approve the minutes. Liz, do we have, and Asha seconded, thank you. Does anyone have any changes, corrections to the minutes? Okay, I will call the-
Bruce has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Go ahead, Bruce.
You're muted, Bruce.
There.
Thank you.
Mr. Morton suggested that we consider creating an ad hoc committee to explore the reasons students are leaving Mill River should be added to the minutes.
Is there a location, Bruce?
Well, you had Ms. French, DuSet, Morton down in that little group. Under number nine.
Okay, thank you.
Under number nine.
Okay, thank you. Anne says she got it. Anybody else? Okay, I will call the question then of the minutes as corrected by Bruce. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any nays? Any abstentions? Sam abstained. Okay, thank you. Now we have public input and announcements. And before we start with the live public input, Christine Billings had sent an email and requested that this statement be read. So I will do that at this point. So this is Christine Billings. "I had the pleasure of watching one recorded policy meeting run by BJ Baron and one live personnel meeting run by Mr. DuSet. Both facilitators were very professional in welcoming of public input. Apparently the recordings are embedded within meeting minutes. Many of us did not know these were recorded or how to access the recording later. I respectfully request that all committee meetings are recorded and made readily accessible to the public on YouTube, similar to the board meetings." She said, "Thank you kindly, Christine Billings." I did send a response to Christine just to say that we were recording all minutes and, and we will certainly look into whether or not we can load them onto YouTube. But we won't stream them. And, and I also wanted to bring up that we've started having conversations of how, or if we can continue to do that when we start to meet live again, which, you know, hopefully will be happening, happening soon, certainly in the next school year. But that conversation has come up. But I guess we're ready for Crystal. Oh, sorry, Maria?
Um, I just want to clarify that the Community Engagement Committee has not been recording the meetings for several months now, but I am happy to restart that. So I apologize if that is an inconvenience for people.
I didn't even realize that, sorry Maria. Thank you for bringing that up. Hey, Crystal, I'm sorry for the interruption. Go ahead.
That's okay. Good evening. Good to see you all. I thank you all for the time you put into, to working for our schools. I know a lot of us come on here to encourage maybe difficult conversations, but your hard work doesn't go unnoticed. Funny that Bruce mentioned adding to the agenda, the reason folks are leaving Mill River, because it's partially what I'm speaking about tonight. And I did just write something up, so I'll go ahead and start. I would like to speak in regards to our athletics at the high school. I'm sure improvements can be made at the elementary level as well. I can't speak to that specifically. I thought this was an appropriate time to mention the decline in our athletics. Specifically watching spring sports has been challenging and painful at times. There's clearly room for improvement. Unfortunately, I have seen many Mill River athletes move out of districts. I believe as a result of the lack of focus within our athletics program. I can count a number of athletes and families that have moved on to MSJ, Routland, Fairhaven, and Burn Burton to pursue their athletic interests. I'm not sure where the problem lies, but I am asking that the board give this area some focus. We need to find out why families are leaving our school and make these areas a priority to improve and increase enrollment numbers. I would like to request a formal survey be sent to families that have left the school, just as the Personnel Committee was discussing the exit surveys for faculty. We should consider the same for families that have opted to leave our school to pursue enrollment in a neighboring school. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you, Crystal, for bringing that to our attention.
Yep, absolutely.
Um, we are now on to committee business. Personnel is up first. Len, I'll turn it to you.
Let me get rid of that thing first. Yeah, basically, there's two things, and we had talked about it at our last committee meeting. There's board action requested to approve a contract for Cheyenne Williams, 1.0 FTE school psychologist and counselor. And I would move that the board approves that.
Okay, I think Sam is motioning. I don't know who's seconding.
Well, I think Sam-
Oh, did you motion? I'm sorry, Len, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I made the motion and I think Sam seconded it. So I think at that point, we're done. And, and any discussion? Maria, go ahead.
Um, I am, I'm not challenging this at all. I completely trust the process that's been, that's gone on. But I am curious, looking at the information that we have. I don't see any dates on the resume that we have here. Just what's the timeframe of her education and experience? Could you share that? Is that, is that something that's appropriate to do right now? I don't want to-
I'm not even sure we can ask those questions.
Okay, I won't ask those questions.
And I don't know, I would ask David.
I mean, I'm happy to withdraw that question if that's, if that wasn't-
Yeah, I, I think when it comes to individuals' work experience, we probably shouldn't discuss that in the public venue. But Maria, I would say Coral's with us tonight. If, if anybody wanted to reach out to Coral for specifics, that I'm sure she'd be more than amenable to that.
Okay, and I'm very happy that we're hiring somebody and that we're supporting our students, so.
Okay, so then I guess we've had a motion and a second. And any other discussion? So I guess we're looking for a vote to approve a contract for Cheyenne Williams, 1.0 FTE school psychologist counselor in favor? Okay. Did you get that, Adrian?
Um, yes, we're fine.
Yeah, okay. And then the next one is to approve a letter of employment for Sarah Bolster as a .3 FTE district PK, pre-K coordinator. And I would make a motion that we approve that letter of employment for Sarah.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. Questions or comments? And David, just you, you sent in the thing that mentioned something about third and fourth, and I think third and fourth grade, and I think that was just a-
That was an absolute typo with the carryover of a couple of words. Yeah, my apologies. Although the pre-K coordinator does work with three and four-year-olds, but that was not the intent of-
Yeah, and I figured that's what it was. But I just wanted to clarify that there is a typo in there that is not an issue.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, because if someone's reading it, they're gonna go, "What?" So, all those in favor? Okay, looks like we're good, Adrian. And then the last piece is just a FYI. Kristen Simonetti has been assigned the stipend responsibility as District Arts Coordinator. And that's just, has taken place. Doesn't involve any kind of hiring or anything other than that. That's an FYI. And then the only other thing I'd say is our next meeting is scheduled for the 26th of May at 6 o'clock. And I'm done.
Thank you. Okay, and Liz, we are going to you now for finance.
Can everyone hear me okay? I don't know whose headset this is, so. All right, good evening, everyone. This evening, we have the following payroll for approval dated May 7th, regular payroll in the amount of $600,052.38. An adjustment dated May 7th in the amount of $2,375.64. That is an adjustment to payroll. And regular payroll, again dated May 14th, in the amount of $9,138.25 for a total of $611,566.27. We have the following pay orders for approval from the General Fund in the amount of $202,504.84. Also from the General Fund in the amount of $74,938.61 from after-school program. A pay order in the amount of $97.78. And finally, from our food program, a pay order in the amount of $33,730.42 for a total of $311,271.65. Now, I also have an additional pay order. Last month, we approved a purchase of a van from Alderman's in the amount of $36,375. And due to issues in timing the purchase, the van was sold before we could finalize the purchase. And so our business department was able to find the same Toyota Sienna all-wheel drive in Bennington from a dealer who will match the price that we approved of $36,375. So I would like to make a motion that we replace the bid to purchase the minivan from Alderman's that was accepted at April 7th. And that we, we, we accept the purchase bid for the bid to purchase an all-wheel-drive minivan from Coggins Toyota of Bennington in the amount of $36,375. So I would like to ask the board that we approve all of these pay orders and the payroll as presented.
Lisa, do you want me to acknowledge seconds or are you?
Oh, I think you usually do.
Okay, Maria, did you second? Okay, thank you. So if you want me to call the question?
Can, can we separate the van from-
From everything else?
I think- Yeah.
Yeah, we can do them separately. All right, so-
You hadn't really had a motion on the actual warrants for, you know, to pay orders.
Okay, so let me go back and let me do payroll and the pay warrants separately. So I would like to make the motion that we accept the payroll and the payroll, the pay orders and the payroll as presented.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, and then I would like to make, make the motion that we accept the- Hold on a second, because I've got many things open over here. I would like to make the motion that we replace the bid to purchase an all-wheel-drive minivan from Alderman's accepted April 7th, and replace that bid to purchase an all-wheel-drive minivan from instead Coggins of Bennington in, in the same amount of $36,375.
And I'm sorry, did we vote on? I know it was motioned and seconded. Did we vote on the first part? I'm not trying to be a stick here.
We start over. We do the, the pay orders and call for a vote, and we'll recount that, please.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Len. So I would like to make the motion that we accept the payroll and the pay orders as presented.
And Sam seconded. And now I'll call the question, unless there's any other comments. No, no hands up. Who is in favor of approving the pay orders as presented? Thank you very much. Did anyone say no? No, no abstentions. Liz, go ahead. Sorry.
No, that's fine. Sorry, I can't-
And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to-
No, 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 don't, don't be sorry. I can't look at the notes, look at the numbers, and look at you all. So thank you for that, Len. So I would like to move that the Mill River Board replace the bid to purchase an all-wheel-drive minivan from Alderman's Toyota as accepted at the April 7th meeting with a bid to purchase an all-wheel-drive minivan from Coggins Toyota of Bennington in the, in the same amount of $36,375.
BJ seconded. Are there any comments or, or clarifications needed, anything like that? Okay, then I will call the question. All in favor, please say aye. Or raise your hand. Sorry. Get used to saying, "Okay." We are done. Liz, do you have-
Just one more thing, that the Finance Committee is, and I gotta open up my calendar. The Finance Committee is not meeting in May. We are next meeting on June 29th. Dave, do I have that right? Great, thank you so much. It's not on my calendar yet. So we are next meeting, 29th at 4:30.
Okay, thank you. And before we move anywhere else through the agenda, I wanted to say it's not really welcome back. It's not really anything other than welcome for the rest of the year, Andrea. She won her election in Clarence.
Thank you.
Had it right on the top of the agenda, then I sort of moved through it. But, but yes, welcome back and whatever. Um, we need a report on the recovery planning, an update. Dave, is that you or Brian?
That will be Brian, as long as he's got the, the internet signal that he needs for it.
Yeah, I don't see his picture, so that, I wasn't sure if he was actually with us. Brian, are you here? Think he may still be out.
So I'll tell you what, Adrian, is it okay if we just defer on that and add to the next, next time we gather for a further update?
Yeah, unless he comes in later in the meeting, that's fine.
Absolutely, you bet.
Um, and then we are up to Central Office Staff and Administrative Benefit Alignment.
Yes, if you don't mind, I'd like to share my screen quickly with the board. I do see some clarification in the chat on the finance meeting date, 28th, as opposed to the 29th. So thanks to, I think, Anne and Liz for, for clearing that up. And let's see. Hopefully you can see a document that leads with Administrative and Central Office Staff recommendations. Is everybody able to see that? And is the text large enough that you can read? Perfect. So a few weeks back in Personnel Committee, this was a recommendation proposal that I presented to the committee, and the committee recommended that we just talk about this as a full board. There has been a, a slight shift in my recommendation based on feedback I heard from the committee that night. But ultimately, want to make a recommendation, ask the board to discuss. And you, you could take action this evening, or you could defer action until an upcoming meeting. That's, you know, entirely at the, at the pleasure of the board. Essentially, just to give you some background, historically, Central Office Staff and Administrative Staff, annual wages are budgeted in the, the annual budgets that we develop. And they're not really linked up to our master agreements, the, the union contracts that we settle. As we have been in COVID era, this past year, we did link up to those in some degree, just for, for the group and for clarity for the new board members. Our Central Office Staff and Administrative Staff agreed to a pay freeze for the school year pending the resolution of the master agreements, to wait and see how those ended up. And those were, those were done, and this school year's funding was sorted out and taken care of. You can actually see that on the far-left side, 2021, 2020, 2021 contract. You can see what those total expenditures are for Central Office Staff and Administration overall. Looking ahead to next year, there's just the question that we need to resolve of what, what the salary rates for folks will be for next year, because the fiscal year does begin very soon, on July 1st. So my recommendation to the board for that is a 2.5% pay increase. And I'll explain the rationale for that recommendation. The rationale essentially is that our support staff are in the midst of a two-year agreement that was settled this year that averages 2.5% over those two years. This current school year, support staff received a 2.75% increase. And next year, support staff will receive a 2.25% increase. Our teachers, on the other hand, are in the midst of finishing up a one-year agreement that was just settled this year at a rate of 2.5%. So looking at that, that 2.5 number, that's pretty consistent. It's, I, I could suggest that there's a logical case that applying that increase for our Central Office Staff and Administrators would be an appropriate move. Just to give you some context, and you could go either way with this. I do have a comparison for you of what the difference for each of those groups overall would be if you looked at 2.25 versus 2.5. So you can see on the, the Central Office Staff, it's about $650 difference total. Administratively, it's about $3,000 difference total. And if you were to go upwards to say 2.75%, you'd have that same difference. There's, there's the same variation in either direction. So that is one recommendation that I would like to ask you to discuss and contemplate and decide when you would like to decide. Recommended 2.5% pay increase for Central Office and Administration. The other piece we need to address really comes from our auditors. And I expect I'll be able to address this and keep Stan happy the way I do, but he'll jump in if I manage to fumble anything. There's a long history in the Mill River School District and the RSSU that predates the MRU USD of unofficially linking Central Office Staff in particular, and some administrative miscellaneous benefits to the union contracts that are in place. So for example, historically, RSSU employees, district employees, were always linked up to the benefits in the Mill River, when Mill River was its own district with its own union agreement, to the, in the Mill River Agreement. So I'm talking about things for Central Office like leave days and how those are allocated and decided, and when increases happen, et cetera. Severance pay, you know, when, when someone leaves the district and they have accumulated leave time, that type of thing. We also have some new benefits that we negotiated into the agreements this past year. We've got a wellness benefit where people can exchange leave time for different wellness activities. We also have some benefits related to undergraduate student loans on the teacher side. And we have some scenarios where you can just trade in leave days for cash in lieu of, of leave days, essentially. Our auditors have asked us, rather than that historical practice of, well, we've always just linked up with this one. They've asked us to have the board take action to just say, "We're going to move forward with this being the approach." That keeps the auditors happy, because there's a rationale for why things happen. So my recommendation to the board is to make that determination. It's logical to me to do that from a licensure standpoint, to look at positions that are either licensed with the state or not licensed with the state. So if you think about our Central Office Staff, those are not positions that require licensure from the state of Vermont. So the recommendation is to have that be aligned with the support staff agreement when it comes to those miscellaneous benefits. And then on the administrative side, which is licensed personnel, to have that follow the teacher agreement, which are also licensed personnel, as it relates to those miscellaneous benefits. So I'd be happy to pause there and take any questions or conversation. And I'd love a cue on if you want me to leave the document up for reference, or if you'd prefer to go back to the full screen. So please, Adrian, just let me know what, what the preference is for that.
I, I think people probably would like to, to read through it while we're talking about it. But anybody can speak up if they'd like the other to end up.
Would it be helpful if I just focused on one section at a time?
What, what action are you looking to the board for, Dave?
So we'd be looking for essentially three pieces of action. We are looking for the board to designate an increase for Central Office Staff and Administrators for 2021, 2022. And then we're asking the board to make a determination of which agreement we are going to align Central Office Staff with for those, those miscellaneous benefits. And then which agreement we will align Administrative Staff with for those miscellaneous benefits.
Okay. Um, just to move this along, I will make a motion for the salary portion of this presentation that office staff get.
Okay, I will second that.
Well, hold on, which, what do you, you have to specify two and a half or two and a quarter.
I know, I was going to.
Sorry.
I think that the conversation was that office staff would follow the support staff, which gets the 2.25.
Adrian?
Yes.
May I make a request?
Sure.
Can we approve and discuss the correlation between the Central Office Staff agreements before we do the raise? I, I'd feel more comfortable about that, considering that we are looking to align the raise with the support staff thing. So I think I would like to have that conversation first.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to clarify before we go there. So first, Adrian, to your comment, my recommendation for the board to consider is 2.5 for each of those groups.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'd missed that. I thought we were talking about that, them both following the, the contracts that they were following.
No, not talking about that level of specificity. Just talking about using the current agreements as a comparison, because that's really all we have for this year.
I'm sorry, I did that entirely.
We have a current teacher 2.5, and we have an average support staff 2.5. So that's the logic behind recommending 2.5 to the, to the board. And then on the, on the agreement alignment, we're recommending administrators align with the teacher one, not on salary, but on the miscellaneous benefits, and Central Office Staff with support staff.
Okay, and we're only talking about this current contract year, regardless of the fact that the support staff has a two-year contract. That is what threw me off.
That is, that's correct.
2.25 for the second year. Okay, sorry. So in, because BJ prefers that, and I think it's perfectly reasonable. We will talk about the master agreement alignment first for the Administration and Central Office Staff, and whether or not they will follow the licensed personnel. The administrators, so.
For the sake of discussion, I'm happy to make the motion that office staff, office central staff follow the support staff. And can I do the same one at the same time for Administration, David? Or do they need to be separate?
I think you could probably choose, choose your own adventure on that one, BJ.
Okay.
I think you can put them together.
And Administration follow the teacher-master agreement.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second for that motion, so that we can start conversation? Thank you, Liz. Now, I am opening this up for conversation and discussion. Does anyone have any comments? I don't see the whole screen, so.
Len?
I do. Sorry. We had talked a while back about, and I don't know, David, whether I can bring this up in public comment or not. But we had talked about, and you can shut me down if you need to. We had talked about paying administrative folks for days that they had not used because of the COVID thing. Did that go anywhere? You know, it's been, and, and I'm, I'm hoping I'm not infringing on anything.
No, no, no worries there, Len. Yes, if you recall, the, the board provided feedback on whether it was worth pursuing an option that we had available under SIR funding, which is basically that folks that were unable to use their vacation time due to COVID able to, to cash those days in, so that they don't lose them. Our, our administrator contracts basically say, "If you don't use your vacation time, it disappears." That's contrary to sick leave and personal leave, which does carry over and accumulate value over, over time. So yes, that has gone into place.
Is anyone-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, no, uh, so. That was put in place, and so. The administrators who did not use their time were paid for that. Right?
If they so chose, Len, that's, yeah, that's an option available to people, and I would say, uh. Five or six folks have probably taken advantage of that option, but, but not, not all by any means.
Yeah, and, and, and again, I'm just, I remember that was there, and. We didn't hear much about it afterwards, so. That is a benefit that the administrators. Not a benefit. But that's, that's something that the administrators, some administrators have been able to take advantage of.
That is correct, and it's worth Len just pointing out again for the group. Kind of two different pools of days, if you will, so. For year-round employees, and that includes support staff as well as central office and administrators, you know, there are vacation days that folks have. The administrator contracts say if you don't lose those, use those days, they disappear. You can carry over a small handful, but you, you can't carry over much. Our support staff folks, any unused vacation days do carry over, so those are not lost. So the vacation time is one kind of bucket. Another bucket is sick and personal leave, which all of our employees do have access to. Those days carry over from year to year, uh, our teacher and support staff agreements have a, a maximum number of days that can. Accumulate, it's usually around 180, 185 or so, and then. There are severance provisions in our union contracts that say when someone retires or resigns, what have you. Those days have value, um, then that value is designated in the master agreements, and they, so they can cash that out. The best example I could give you is, um, thinking about central office staff who have retired historically. You know, when they retire, those folks have unofficially been linked up with Len, what you would recall as the old Mill River provisions on retirement. Uh, and sick leave payout, et cetera. So we, we just seek to kind of formalize that to keep the auditors happy as opposed to just, yeah, that's how we've always done it, that's, that's the purpose.
I think that, I mean, it's, it's useful, and I'm, I'm sure something that should be done. Len, you have anything else?
No, and I, and I appreciate that response, thank you very much, it just, I know we had talked about it, and then we haven't talked about it in a while, so thanks.
So does anyone else have any, any comments, or, and as I said, I can't see everybody, so if you notice someone raising their hand, please say something. Okay, not hearing anyone, and not seeing anyone, um, I will call that question, and. All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand, or your thumb, or your pencil, or something. Okay, thank you very much. Now. I have to admit, now I'm totally confused.
You might want to get, you might want to get opposed in abstentions as well.
Oh, do we, okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Sure, I can see everyone, I don't know if you can.
Okay, I can't, which is throwing me off completely, because I'm sort of just wondering what's going on, um, are there any, um, votes nay?
I do not see any hands.
Are there any extensions?
Also no hands.
Okay, and now we will vote on the, um. The salary portion, because we've, we've covered the, the benefit side. So does anyone have any comment, we're talking about 2.5% for both parties for the coming year. Which seems totally reasonable. And it's what the support staff and what the teachers are getting. Okay, I will make a motion to support the 2.5% raise for the administrative and, um, central office staff, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Are there any, are there any discussion or, or comments on this? Dave, could you watch?
Adrian, I do not see any hands.
Okay.
Oh, I, I just have a question, is there a reason we wouldn't, um, codify this in a way like we have with the other ones, like, like we just attached?
You mean in a, in a document?
Yeah, yeah, like how we're going.
They're not a represented group, so we don't have ongoing master agreements with those.
Sure, sure, I just meant that, like, the link that we just made in, in the other way, is there, um. Just, just wondering if there would ever be a potential in the future or something that would have, like. So that we would consider linking whatever increases we were to do with other groups in the same way or something, is that just something that's not possible, not done?
I think we do it exactly the way we're doing it, every, just, we do it.
Just asking, thank you for that clarification.
I mean, we haven't done it in the past, so this is a change. So, so it's just been behind the scenes, that was, that was what was done, and now we're, now we are exactly what you're saying.
Excellent.
Official.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, so.
Adrian, could I just add a comment as part of the discussion on that, just to, to respond to Sam's, uh, question? Timing is kind of a part of it as well, so if you think about how budgets are built, if we look at our. Teachers, our teachers are going into next year, we have an unresolved master agreement for next year. We're not going to the table until September to start to discuss finances. Uh, I'm not, I can't predict how that will play out, but if there's a circumstance where. It's budget building season, and the board is building the budget for next year. The board is going to go ahead and make decisions about what it intends to allocate for groups that are not represented. And what it's going to allocate for groups like support staff that are already settled. So sometimes the, the, the master agreements and the actual budget building process don't align in ways that make it easy to, to do the automatic link.
Thank you, Dave. So if we could call the question, all in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Dave, can you pay attention to that, thank you.
I believe I see a lot of hands.
Okay, so it passed, but are there any, um, nos?
I see Len with a thumbs up, and Matt, I see hand on face with a thumb, is that a, is that a indication? I'm sorry.
I had voted yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Matt, so we have one no, are there any extensions?
No hands for extensions, Adrian.
Okay, thank you. We muddled our way through that, I apologize for, for that, but.
Thank you for that, folks.
Okay. Um, next on the agenda is strategic planning, now I had sent something out to folks, and I, I sent it out late, of course, I'm sorry. But I really wanted it to just be, um, I put it on the agenda for, as a discussion. And I will, I'm sorry, I have to try and find mail. Okay. So what I wanted to, to do was say that. Last night at our training, it, it, you know, it certainly is obvious that, that we have a lot of new members, we haven't had this many new members all at once. I think since the board was formed. We've done the pat, you know, the, the board from last year, um, the last school year. Had done a lot of work on, on goals and, and mission statements and all that kind of thing, and, and I know everybody who is new is unfamiliar with that. And, um, I think we've also had conversations that, that we really don't know one another. And I was really hoping that tonight we could, at, you know, at least acknowledge those things if, if we do. And that maybe it is, um. You know. I wouldn't say fair, but it, it's, it's a good thing for a board to have. A, a clear understanding of where everyone's coming from and what we support and what we expect our administrators to do, and all of the things that boards are supposed to accomplish. And if you have four new members of an 11-member board. That's a lot of people that, that aren't really familiar with how the board works, with what the board is after, with what the administrators should like. So I was, I was hoping that we could, you know, first off. Have some social time, we've kind of had that conversation before. Could pick a date for this, that would be lovely. And then I suggest that we, that we have a retreat and at least revisit. The, the mission statements and the goals that the board has identified in the past. Understand them and maybe refocus them, or at least, um. You know, make it clear that this is what we're supporting right now. So that everybody's on the same page, and we've had a clear conversation about. What the, where the schools are going and what direction and how we're, we're hoping to get there. So, did everyone have a chance to, to read that email? Okay, lots of yeses, not all, but yes. So I guess I'm, I'm opening this up, is, was this my imagination, or is this something that other people are interested in? I see some smiles and some nods and, but, but feel free to unmute yourself and have, um, this conversation, Bruce has raised his hand, so I. Will call on him first.
I, I just have a question, what's your definition of retreat?
Well, what I had, what I had suggested in my email. Yeah, I, I think an organized retreat, where we would have a facilitator to walk us through where we are, where we have been, where we would like to be, and how we want to get there.
I'm talking, some people say a morning retreat, a day-long retreat.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't think that, that you can do this work for, for too terribly long, I think we would become, having a conversation about a morning retreat. You know, on a Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah, in the past, I think that's, helps to say what we've dad, done in the past for a retreat.
Right, oh, well, you know, but that's part of it, there, you know.
I think what we did is, we picked a day, it was a Saturday morning. We met at the Grange at, um, just, uh, just outside the, uh, Clarendon Elementary School. And, you know, people brought some food, which is always good. And we sat and we had a big whiteboard out, and we did. Spent a good morning, I think it was, um, talking.
Do it in one morning.
Yeah, talking about a specific subject, I remember getting some training with, uh. At one of the meetings, I remember doing some of those, uh, board work at one of these meetings. It was just a very. Conversational. Meeting, we sometimes broke out into little groups and things like that. I do say, I found it very valuable, uh, just being able to have these open conversations with other board members. Okay. Speak up if everybody else remembers anything else.
Well, some of that, I was also hoping that we, we could maybe move through with, with a, a facilitator so that we stay on topic and, and actually accomplish something. Len, you have your hand raised?
Yeah. I'm, and. Couple of things, number one. I don't. We may need a facilitator, I don't believe we do. We need to talk about the, the things that are on the table, board needs to deal with. Secondly, I'm, I, I, it really, really, really bothers me when we talk about. The previous board and this board, it's the same darn board, there are some different people on it. But that doesn't make it a different board. Stop that, talk about this board. Previously, the other board was working towards and accomplishing a lot of things, this board can do the same. We haven't had the opportunity to do that because of the COVID thing, and we haven't had a chance to get together. In, in the past, we met every summer and, and. Developed a plan, we have the goals, we have the mission. We don't need to. Have, in my opinion, we don't need to have a facilitator come in and say, well, this is your mission, and this is your goals, no, we already have them. So. Let's talk about those, now if you want to get a, the facilitator. To help, great, but it, it, we really, if, if, if you want to move forward. In what this board can do as a board, then stop talking about that board and this board. It's a board, we're the same board. Let's move on.
Liz?
So, um, let me thank you for that, and I think I, could I lower my hand?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, so Adrian, when I read your email, basically. What I envisioned was that we reconvene and go over the board goals and revisit the board goals and kind of. You know, discuss, do we need to make amendments or updates, or, you know, let's look at this, uh, let's look at the board. Board and district goals that we established and just kind of revisit them as a board. And discuss, you know, are we still good with the metrics that we've established and the goals? That we've established and the timelines, um, and just revisit it together and talk about it. Did I understand correctly? Okay, super.
And I agree.
Awesome.
Good. Anybody else? Okay, are we ready perhaps to, to pick a date in June that we could move forward with this, oh, BJ, it says you raised your hand.
Yeah, I was just gonna support, I think, I, I would like just an open conversation, I, without a facilitator. Um, this next one. I just.
Retreat or the, or, I, I was trying to schedule.
For the retreat, I don't think we need a facilitator, I, to redo all the mission statements thing, I think we did a really good job. Previously, I think, I know I definitely need a refresher course, and there's some things that we learned. So, but I think, just an open conversation, I think would be good. So that was my supporting.
I do think, I mean, just to be perfectly honest, I think you need somebody to lead a conversation. Are, are you anticipating that I do that, that Dave does that, I mean, that's why I brought up an outside facilitator. You can't really just have a group of people together. And, and have a free-for-all.
I remember a couple of times that we didn't have a facilitator at, at retreats. And I think this board needs just to have a conversation. I can certainly see one, a, a second one down the line, if we feel that we need to. To have a facilitator, but I think the first one, I would prefer the in more informalness of just a topic to talk about.
Okay, we'll come with the mission statement and the goals.
Yeah, and then maybe from that one, we decide, let's do this with a facilitator, or. What we have actually works.
Do we want to do that at a regular board meeting, rather than schedule an entire retreat? As a three-hour conversation?
I'm sorry, we, we can't do it at a regular board meeting, we don't have enough time, it's about time. And.
No, no, I, I meant to just reacquaint ourselves with the goals, not to have the whole long conversation, but at least to know what they are, I, does it, do our new board members? Have they read our mission statement and our, and our goals? Good. Bruce isn't nodding, but I'm not sure if you're frozen.
I'm still playing catch-up.
Well, yeah, I, I, well, yeah, I can understand that. Um, if that's everybody's desire, we can do, uh. We still, we're talking about whether or not we wanted to have a social get-together. And then to have the retreat later on, Maria had, had raised her hand before and is still very politely standing there, go ahead.
Well, thanks, um, partly, I, I'm sorry, I think my kids are using too much bandwidth, so I can't see anybody's faces right now. But I would like to argue for having a facilitator. Yes, we are still the Mill River Board, but we have changed significantly, we have more new people on the board than have. Joined the board at once since I have been here, and I feel like. That the process that we all went through with the election. Exposed some deep divisions within our community, and. I think it would be helpful to have a trained facilitator, we can have a conversation, but we're all pretty careful, and we're all. And with somebody who's trained, it is really helpful to have someone who can help guide the conversation, help remind people of. Norms and sort of, I don't want to say ground rules, but. Helpful ways for us to communicate and maybe move us through whatever process we need to move through more efficiently and effectively.
Okay. Andrea. You raised your hand.
Dave was first.
Oh, I didn't see Dave, sorry, sorry, Dave.
No, go ahead, Adrian.
So. I agree with, um, BJ, just having the first being a social thing. And setting up the ideas for if we need a facilitator, or the second one to help us. Just knowing state government and doing retreats that way, it's really hard sometimes if. You're new into some, something or new into a concept, and you automatically walk in and the facilitator is trying to dictate everything that's going around. And you haven't had the chance to actually experience what may be happening in that retreat. So I think because of the new, and I just, for me being really new. I would rather have a social thing to have. Us be able to socially talk. us be able to socially talk about what we would like to happen at a retreat with maybe a facilitator. Because I don't think we have the chance here at night to do it.
Okay, I, I, I understand that. How, Liz, I, I saw you. I have suggested a, a social get-together. So we're talking about a social get-together and then a social retreat and then a possibly organized retreat. Am I clear on that? Andrea?
I'm thinking social retreat and then from there go to the organized facilitator retreat, not the extra one.
Miss, misrepresented this. My, a, a social get-together. I didn't say social retreat, but it was a time for us, hopefully.
The social get-together. Yeah, sorry. I am exhausted, so.
I'm obviously having trouble keeping all this straight because we're, we all have different ideas and that's why you need a facilitator.
Well, I think we just need a get-to-know.
Oh, absolutely. How about we pick a date for that and?
Determine if we need a facilitator because we may not even need a facilitator. I think all of us are strong enough to maybe run a meeting ourselves that way and not need somebody from the outside. If we run into problems, then maybe look at something like that, but I totally vote for trying to do it without one. Sorry, Maria. Just because I have experienced it with several facilitators and it doesn't always work well.
Okay. Liz, you still had something to say, right?
I, I'm still trying to clarify what we're talking about. So, um, I kind of want to go, so what I'm envisioning, um, I was envisioning that our social get-together and our work retreat were one and the same. So I, I recall that our, uh, district and board goals have five pieces, five components. And so I believe there are five people who have been, you know, I, I'm gonna volunteer five of us to kind of take one of each of the five pieces to present. You know, back to BJ's point with bagels, I don't know, did someone say bagels? I have food on my mind now because it's dinnertime and BJ said something about food. So I kind of envisioned coming together, eating, hanging out, and having it be like a working social get-together and we can each take a piece of the board and district goal plan and talk about it as a group. And it's an opportunity for us to, um, clarify, make, you know, ask clarifying questions and, and talk about any modifications or amendments we might want to make. Okay, that's. Yeah, I just, I, it makes me nervous to have to find two Saturdays.
I, I guess, could I have a quick show of hands of, of people that think a Saturday with bagels or maybe something sweeter? And, and a conversation about the goals and then see if we have to move forward with something more organized? Okay. Could we pick a date?
I would like to strongly.
Dave still has something, sorry.
Would you just mind if I shared a couple of thoughts just for context that maybe they help inform or maybe not? These are just opinions as, as a person who, uh, shares his opinions with the board. It's important to keep in mind kind of the distinction in what we're talking about. My recollection of the concept of a social gathering among the, among the board came from a conversation that you had that was largely in response to a brutal election season and some of the dynamics that existed around that. And the board started to have a conversation like, you know what? We need to create some bonds. So I want to encourage you to look at that as a thing in and of itself, which probably needs to happen before you plan any, you know, major significant things moving forward. That's one piece. Second, I want to remind you, I did ask for a, a slight deferral. We are scheduled after the school year concludes to present a goals update to you. In other words, where we are currently with the goals that are in place, what current data we have, it takes into account all the, you know, the assessments that happened at the end of this year, et cetera. So that, that in and of itself will be pretty informative to our, you know, anyone who's new to the board. But again, you can access those, those goals on the website if you want to. And then looking forward, um, I would just encourage you to keep in mind that what's important in whether it's reviewing the goals to make, see if they need to be tweaked or left alone, or whether you call that strategic planning or whatever you want to call that process that you're talking about. The real objective in my mind is what does this board define as the district being successful? And to me, that's the conversation that needs to be had. What are the indicators of what you folks are looking for to, to demonstrate that we're going the direction that we want to? And then that fuels, you know, the development or the retention of things that are already in place. So I just want to, it helps me to organize things in my mind. I wanted to offer that to you as some organizing concepts.
Which June meeting did, did we put that on?
The earliest we could do it would be the second meeting, which would be the 16th, just because of, we won't have all the data in hand for the first, first meeting in June.
Do you want to pick a time in July to do this?
To do the goals update or do what you're talking about?
No, no, we're, well, if, if, if you guys give us the goal, goal update at the end of June, then we can meet on a Saturday and have a discussion and bagels and, and decide where we're going to go from there.
July is gonna be, July is gonna be tough for me.
Bruce and I are in similar camps, if I may make the pun.
And I want to be sure that we, um, deliver or do the, the survey of families before we have that discussion. The athletics departures survey. Because that's going to inform this discussion, that the outcome of that will inform this discussion as well.
We haven't actually determined that we're going to do that, but, but yes.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. What survey is that? I'm not aware of that.
We haven't decided on any survey yet.
Oh, okay.
It was suggested and, and is it, is a reason why we haven't caught, talked about it yet.
Who hasn't talked about it?
And I, excuse me?
Who hasn't talked about it?
We as a board have not talked about it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um.
So is it gonna happen or?
We haven't talked about it yet.
Okay, okay.
Crystal just suggested it at the beginning of this meeting.
I think for the purposes of this discussion, let's assume it's going to happen.
I, I think that's.
And that it should be part of, you know, a discussion that we have in conjunction with a board retreat.
Okay, I get that. Do we want to schedule anything if the meeting in June, I don't have a calendar in front of me. If somebody can call theirs up.
I'm gonna throw out June 26th.
That would be after the meeting. Bruce, have you started camp yet?
No.
Okay.
Week to 28th. So 26 is fine.
I am likely unavailable as that is the weekend before we open our camps. So I will have to work that weekend.
Okay. Um, I don't know how we can do it before the administration has given.
I can check tentatively. I can try. I can probably do an exchange. Is it, um, we're like to keep it to a half day?
Yeah, absolutely.
I could potentially then, um, yeah, I'll shift my day. I'll just work into the night.
Okay, thank you very much, Sam. So is everybody good with June 26th? We will have had the presentation. We'll talk about the survey, um, at the next meeting. We can't really take action on that without, we'll put it on the agenda.
I'm just writing it down so I don't forget.
Adrian, for that particular thing, she associated that with like the evaluations and stuff. Um, can we bring that up at Personnel Committee first?
Um, sure.
Before we go too far down the road with that athletic thing?
We're gonna have a personnel meeting, uh, a week from today. What, what, I, I don't understand this whole.
Len, at the, at the very beginning, did you remember Crystal's comment of this meeting?
No.
Okay. Rewatch the meeting on Crystal's comment that she made at the very beginning of this.
Okay, yes, yeah.
Because when you have to have the whole conversation with the full board, I, I, I personally think we might as well have it as the full. Because we'll have to do it again anyway. So I'll put it on the agenda if we, if we straighten things out at the personnel meeting and we have a suggestion, then we'll have something to vote on at the next meeting, but it will be on the agenda for the next meeting. How's that sound?
So it needs to go on the Personnel Committee agenda as.
Or maybe not.
How about we? Stop for a second. June 26th worth for everybody? We will, okay. Put it on your calendars. It's nine o'clock in the morning. We'll figure out where and get a hold of you and we might ask for food. Okay? Now, on the agenda, which we are going to move through, is transact other legal business.
So I'm not getting an answer, right?
Excuse me? Your, Len? Len? Could we now discuss the athletic survey to the point of where is this going to go? Whether it's going to be discussed in personnel or whether it's just going to be discussed at the next. Does anybody have any comment on that? Len, if you would like to put it on your Personnel Committee agenda, then we will have, we will also have it on the main board meeting. An athletic survey, why families are leaving Mill River.
And I'm gonna put that on the agenda. And what am I gonna receive for information? Anything?
I think the Personnel Committee will have to decide whether or not we're going to send a, a survey and what we are going to ask.
Okay, well, that's, I, I wasn't aware of that. Thanks for asking. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. All right. Is there other legal business? Dave, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Adrian. I do have one item of other legal business, but first I'd like to ask, I'm, I'm, I'm curious why that's the Personnel Committee's, um, area of focus. That has nothing to do with personnel. I'd maybe suggest policy as a possible place that that conversation could be.
I don't mind.
I personally think we should just do it at the main board.
We'll just do it at the meeting. We'll just have a conversation about it at the full meeting then.
Okay.
Make it easy. So it's off your thing.
That's, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I got actually three things. Um, I'll probably go through it kind of quick. Adrian, at the last meeting, um, you were sort of sidelined a little bit about, uh, having to do a speech or having, doing something at the, uh, at the graduation. Are you, uh, still going to be able to do that? Is that something you, uh, want us to toss off to somebody else?
No, I'll be at the graduation.
Okay, that was gonna be, I was just gonna do something different. Situation number two, no, that is number two. Uh, situation number one was actually number two. Now, situation number two, which was number one. During the course of last summer, we, um, sort of got to a point where we weren't doing the, uh, the, um, pledge to the flag. We got a little bit into it back in the wintertime and we have since the last couple of months or so gotten out of that. Is that something that was a decision that was made or is that something that's just, uh, gone by the wayside?
There was no formal decision.
Is that something that the board would be willing to, uh, start back up again?
I don't know. We can put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Have a discussion. They can do that. They can. I can live with that. Um, and third, um, the board just went through a an education seminar that we had, uh, that others had last night, and I've not been in those. Likely due to the flack, fact that my wife and I adopted, uh, six kids over a 10-year, um, plan. Five of those six were kids of color. Uh, four of those kids are still around. Uh, one of my sons has been, was killed in a car accident, so we sort of lost him. I'm thinking that, uh, maybe we could put into some trainings that will help us a little bit. This last year, we, uh, got pretty much chastised by not dealing with things, um, as best we could with, uh, with, uh, Robert's Rules of Orders and with, uh, VSBA, uh, board member, uh, actions that, that are acceptable and in some cases of public information. Could we work into some type of an education where we can learn a few of those things as, as a board to help us, you know, deal more with the public in a correct way instead of a, a hairy way to, to, uh, get things done?
Um, I think Maria has her hand raised and perhaps she wants to, to talk about that in terms of community engagement. I don't know.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. Actually, what I, what I wanted to say was that, um, that Doug, I wish you had been able to come to our trainings because I feel like you could have made a really valuable contribution. So, um, I'm not sure that, I can't remember if we're finished or not, but, um, but that would have been good. Also, I think it would be helpful for us to learn more about those. They are, um, in the handbook that we have. So that is a place that everybody has access to. I did share that document with everybody on the board.
Okay.
And if perhaps that would be a subject to bring up at the retreat on what, what other PD the board needs. I know VSBA will give, um, presentations on how, how boards, um, should behave in, in many circumstances. Board behavior is, is one of those, those things. So if that's something that we're interested in, if we move on to the other suggestions of freeing up the second board meeting for, for more work time, that would certainly be something that would be, could easily be addressed at, at that time.
Right.
And I think that's, that's, you know, we'll be looking for ideas of, of what we should be looking at in those second meetings if that, if we make that change.
Yeah, I've got a, got a lot of experiences as a board member, but I'm, a lot of times I don't understand how things, how we deal with things when we should do differently. I just don't know some of the stuff that we should be doing. It, uh, it would help me a lot to do, to be able to do that. David, I have a question. We had, uh, Coral came to us and said they're looking for another place to, uh, to move her, uh, program out of. Do we have access to the building that used to be, uh, Superintendent's Office in front of Clarendon, uh, School?
We still own that building, Doug. I'd be happy to.
I talked to Carol Gary. She said that she thought the town owned that. I said, I don't think so. I said, we put some stuff into it and all.
School, school district owns that. I'd, I'd be happy to defer to Coral if the board would like just to, to address that quickly.
Yep. Dave, can you just give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Okay, thanks. Um, so yes, Doug, in answer to your question, the old RSSU building is very much, um, on the list of potential options at this point. I will tell you that our best estimates are, um, in terms of cost to renovate that building, make it appropriate and usable, um, are, are very, very high. Um, and I'm not sure that the board is, is really willing or able to even entertain that conversation, but I would be willing to come at you with some facts and figures at some point. But just to answer your question, yes, that building is very much on the list of options being explored.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's looking a little sad. I've had a conversation with Gary. We have some very large stumps that are there up about a foot and a half, two feet off the floor, off the ground and it, uh, it's looking kind of rough, but I want to get that taken care of. But yeah, I, I would think we should look into that, even if we gotta defer some of that stuff over a two-year plan, to make it more affordable for taxpayers and such and be able to use that building. And we have the same advantages there because they're next to a school building.
Right.
Move kids around. We can have the lunches from the school through there, um, transportation out of there without a problem. So a lot of good things to keep that place going.
We have done some very preliminary inspections. Um, and so we do have a list of, um, of ideas for repairs and renovations that would need to happen. Um, we do know there is some asbestos in the floors over there. Um, so we're looking at options for encapsulation and stuff like that. But so there, there's, there's a lot to be done, but there's a lot of promise as well. And so that's why because of the promise and potential it has, it's, it's an option we're looking at.
Okay, sounds good. We'll, uh, we'll keep it in mind then. Um, I think that's about it. And something else, but I want to check with, uh, with finance. Uh, there was a, oh, a strange thing on the, uh, on the payroll, actually more on the, uh, the warrant for the, um, other part. It was a an expense to Earl Struck Repair, uh, two weeks ago of, uh, $268. Uh, there was expense this time of $15,000. And I'm just wondering if something got moved around or is there a missed thing? I'm, I'm not blaming anybody. I just would like to find out what's going on with that. That's a, that's a big jump. I want to, I want to make sure we aren't in trouble. And that's enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Um, if no one has, does anyone have any else, thing else for other legal business, Dave? Because I have one announcement that I wanted to make, but.
I, I see Bruce first. I prefer to, um,
Okay.
delay mine. Let Bruce go ahead. If that's okay.
Bruce, go ahead.
I think I wrote my hand first.
Okay.
Hi. I sort of hesitate to bring this up, but I've got to. I think it's important. We've got five new members of the board. That's almost half because we can't divide somebody in half. And I appreciate Adrian. And I appreciate Adrian last week, the apology you two gave, you know, that was great. But in that apology, and I think this is where we need to clear things up. In that apology, you said um questioning supposed actions by both board, by both the board and superintendent that weren't true. You said that what you believed was information. You said that accusations could only be corrected by breaking confidentiality. And you said to bring transparency and honesty to the election. I don't think anybody was not trying to be honest. So I'm I'm saying this, if the board knows something, if half the board knows something and the other half doesn't know something. Half the board's working in the dark. So if we said something wrong, we need to be corrected. And I know Mr. Finn is willing to waive confidentiality. If we need to do this in Executive Board Meeting or something, but we all need to be on the same page. Otherwise, we're going to be going through the year saying, well, who's 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 telling the truth? Who's got the right information? That's just what I'm thinking.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. Dave?
Thanks, Adrian. Um, I wanted to take a moment to recognize a former board member that our community lost this week. Uh, Grant Reynolds is someone that that many of us knew and loved. Um, Grant passed away after some illness on Monday evening of this week. And, um, you know, we got that information yesterday, shared that with the board last night. I was able to share that with our staff this morning. And just want to publicly say that um Grant was a cornerstone of our effort to to pull together a merged school district in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. He was a long-serving board member in Tinmouth prior to that, when it was its own standalone district. And did a lot of things to take care of this place and take care of uh the work that we do and make sure that we were set up well and set up for success. On on a personal level, and I suspect some of you feel the same way I do. Uh, I consider Grant a mentor. I considered him a good listening ear. He always had a, between he and George, always a story about something. Um, but but just an absolute pleasure to to be around and a definite asset to this community that will be missed and will be lost. So just wanted to publicly thank Grant and his family for his service and and uh send our condolences to his family.
Thank you. That that was what I was going to 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 bring up, and I appreciate those words. Um, Grant was a great person and and he was very missed, I mean, when he left the board. Asha, did you have something to say?
Uh, I'd like to thank Grant from all of us here in Tinmouth. Um, certainly, I. Don't think I would have run for school board um had I not had um his support, um, his mentorship and um his example. Um, to follow, which was something that I um took note of the moment that I moved to this town. So um, it's going to be challenging for all of us here in Tinmouth um without Grant. Um, feels feels uh that it is already. Um, and you know, just to to echo, uh, to echo Dave and echo Adrian. Um, what a a great mark Grant has left on our community. Um, I I know we here in our little town, um, will forever be so grateful for his contributions. So, um, again, th- thank you. Um, on on behalf of of those of us in Tinmouth. Um, just want to publicly thank Grant for all that he's done for for our little school and and for the board.
And he's the reason you still own that little school.
Don't we know it?
Just just to acknowledge that.
Oh, oh, absolutely, absolutely. Well, we're glad, we're glad we're still here.
No. I believe that. Um, does anyone have any other legal business that we want to discuss? Uh, actually, on on other legal business, I don't have a pun, but George said hello. I had to talk to him today on on Lister Business, and he he said hi. Um, okay, then we will move on. We don't need an executive session, do we? Dave? Okay, perfect. I will um entertain an motion to adjourn. And Len has made that motion and.
No, that, and and I, I'm sorry. I didn't get a response last week, their last meeting. And um, I know I won't get one this meeting, but I would really like to know why. The complaint against this board, all of us here. And myself, which said that. There was shame and concern and all of these things was was dropped. And that complaint was dropped with no explanation. At some point, and I think maybe the next meeting would be a good time, to have a. Someone who would be part of the administrative team that that filed the complaint. I would, I would really appreciate just, I don't want anything fancy, just to explain to me why the complaint was made in public. And then we didn't even know it was dropped until the night of the meeting. And then nothing was told to us as the board and about why. And and you people need to understand that complaint was filed against all of us. So at some point, I would like some sort of answer. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, your request is noted. David, do you have a response?
Yeah, Adrian, may I speak to that?
Yes, of course.
Uh, Len, this may not be the answer that you're seeking, but in simple terms, on behalf of our administrators or in fact, anyone who um submits a complaint. Um, someone who submits a complaint has every right to withdraw that complaint without explanation. And I would assert that the same applies to the folks in that case. I also would like to be very clear that there was no complaint issued publicly. There was no complaint um listed on a on an agenda. There was nothing to, I'm sorry, let me take that back. Public complaints via B three were listed on an agenda, but there was nothing released to the public. So talking about that in this context essentially um brings that up. But from the administrative perspective, concerns were expressed. We saw the board moving in a direction to express those concerns, or I'm sorry, to. Address those concerns. Complaint was withdrawn, and that would be the extent of anything that we would wish to to say on that topic.
Thank you.
I will again accept a motion to adjourn. Anybody? BJ, thank you. Asha has her hand.
There's two people with hands raised, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Asha, go ahead.
Thank you.
I couldn't see you, I'm sorry.
Oh.
You're black. It just says your name.
Thanks, Adrian, and thank, thank you. Um, so I just, I do want to clarify, um. I don't want to drag this out, but I do want to clarify on the earlier discussion um about the retreat and or barbecue. Um, are we decided that? Are we decided that it will be the retreat with the the more the more social version of the retreat and with no barbecue? Or are we still open to that social-only event? I know we spoke through it at in-depth, but I just want to make sure we clarify because I know, as as Dave said, um, that. We suggested the barbecue in response to, um, you know, I think the. The campaign cycle and the chance to get to know one another. So again, I I just do want to voice, um. I want to make sure that we take enough time to build that trust on a social level. Um, my concern is that we might have our bagels and I get to have a brief chat, but then dive right into to matters at hand.
I am fine with trying to schedule something that's that's purely social. It seemed to, the conversation seemed to move away from that, but I am. You guys run run things, so if anybody has another comment on this. As of right now, we have the twenty-six scheduled for a social period and a. Um, more of an education session on what goals are in an existence and have been adopted by this board. And whether or not everybody understands them and everybody is okay with them, and and that is the direction we're going to be going. Um, do we have other people that would also like to have a purely social gathering? Okay, half of my screen just went blank again, so.
I don't see any hands raised, Adrian, although I do see Doug and Matt's electronic hands raised.
Okay. Um, I I guess we can keep. Matt, you have, are you speaking on this or something else?
I just have one other thing I wanted to bring up before the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Thanks again for clarifying, Adrian.
I'm not sure we did, but but.
I was.
Yes, by the absence of, yes, we want to get together for a for a barbecue. So, Matt, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you.
Uh, just one quick thing. I know we talked about the athletic surveys, maybe talking about it at the next board meeting. Um, if we are in fact going to to talk about doing an athletic survey at the next board meeting. I would request that maybe we could ask either the Athletic Director or some representative from the Athletic Department to be present for that meeting to answer any questions.
Okay, I think Athletic Director is still on leave. Um, I don't know if there's anyone in her place that could come to the meeting.
Just just an idea.
No, no, I I don't disagree. I'm not sure if anybody could take her place. I I I mean, she'll be back, but but she's not working right now.
Yeah, we we may want to strategically schedule that at a time when Kim could participate. Um, but uh, she is on maternity leave right now, so we may be a little bit too soon on that one. So we might want to think about that with timing.
I just think it'd be really beneficial to have her there to talk about the direction and what she feels and defend her actions or anything like that, so. I just think that'd be beneficial.
I think that would probably put the conversation into the summertime at some point. When is, when is um she scheduled to come back?
I don't have that information at hand. I know that she's out through the end of this school year, um, just because that's right around the corner.
Okay. Um, there were other hands that were raised. Doug, your hand is still raised. You're muted.
Not not supposed to be. Oh, hit the thing like this.
Okay, thank you. Asha, your hand is still up. Are you, okay, not, okay. So. Any other comments? I don't see anybody. I'm afraid to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Fine, I will do it. A motion to adjourn?
I would like to second that.
Okay, all in favor, just raise your hand and get off the screen. Okay, thank you very much.